All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the Tuesday, October 14th, 2025 Oak Harbor Planning Commission meeting. It is 6:00, and we'll dive right into it. So first, our call to order. We are all present, and I would like to welcome our newest Planning Commission member, Jeffrey Ward. Thank you for being here. Thank you for volunteering your time. Looking forward to working with you, and that's all you get, moving right along. We have our approval of the minutes for September 9th, last meeting, so I'll take a moment for you all to look over that, and then when you're ready, take a motion to approve those.
Okay, I make a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes as written.
A second.
All right. Move by Bradley, second by Frye. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I was told since I wasn't on the commissary at the last one that it's appropriate for me to abstain of approving the minutes.
Perfect. So, motion passes with one abstention. All right, and so at this point, we'll move along to our public comment period. We have one public comment that will be displayed when we get there, but at this time, folks are welcome to comment on things of interest on the agenda or not on the agenda. To ensure your comments are recorded correctly, please state your name into the microphones, and if you have any written comments, you can submit those 20, or yeah, what, two days in advance? Two days in advance, and they'll be displayed on our presentation. So, we'll start with the written comments that we received. We received one, and it is on screen now. Give you all a moment to read.
Just a small period.
Very good. So if you want to submit comments like that, you can submit them to business days in advance to www.okeharbor.gov/publiccomment. And if there's anyone in the room that would like to make a public comment, now would be your time. All right. Going once, going twice, okay. And for anyone online, if you want to make a public comment, now would be your time. All right, going once, going twice, three times. Thank you for your public comments, and we'll move right along to our discussion for tonight. So this is our 2025 Major Comprehensive Plan update, presented by our principal planner, Kat Kamak. So whenever you're ready, take it away.
Good evening. Thank you. Welcome to our new commissioners, and good to see everybody here. I will make my remarks brief and leave the floor open for discussions and comments related to the policies. I'll just go through an overview for folks that are watching at home or may watch later. We are currently just taking a first look at all the existing policies in our comprehensive plan. We're going element by element. In the, at the last Planning Commission meeting, we looked at a few elements. We looked at urban design, transportation, utilities, environment, capital facilities, and today, I'm hoping that we can have a discussion on parks and recreation, economic development, government services, and climate resiliency, and those are the four. So I'm going to grab my pointer here. All right, I have just a few slides, and oh, by the way, we also have our consultant that's online, Erin Kelly from Kimley Horn is here. They are helping us with our comp plan update. They have been involved in helping with these draft policies, reviewing it against all the state bills. So some of the policy suggestions, some of the new policies that are recommended in here come from House bills that they are incorporating for us in some fashion or the other. So if we have any questions that Erin can answer, she's here to share information with us as well, just FYI. So with that, I'm going to quickly go through a few slides and then turn it back over to the commission for comments and questions and discussion. So again, just to go over, we're doing the plan policy review. Again, this is the first kind of cut at it. We're looking at the existing policies right now. We'll have a chance to look at, take all the comments from both commissions. We're also reviewing most of these policies internally with staff and with our departments, so we have their comments. We'll take all the input and generate a draft document, which will again come back to the Planning Commission and the public for review. So we'll have a couple more chances to look at it. So if items don't get addressed tonight, or if you bring things up and it's continuing to be discussed, it could be addressed at a later draft as well. So as I mentioned, the comments will help shape the draft plan, so this is the first take at it. And as mentioned, we're looking today at parks, recreation, economic development, government services, and climate resiliency. So we'll look at all of these policies, and as you're aware, we are also looking at doing an environmental impact statement for our comprehensive plan. I mentioned this to the Planning Commission in the past. An environmental impact statement is an alternate to doing a SEPA. Normally, we would do comp plan amendments, we would do a environmental analysis, a SEPA process, and we usually identify some mitigation measures if there are impacts, and we adopt the plan. This time, our comp plan is being planned for a population that exceeds the original EIS. We're also considering a large flux in development potential, and so I think going the EIS route is just a better way to analyze all the impacts of what we're looking at and try to start mitigating for them as we go through the planning process. So we are hoping that this EIS will start at the end of this year or beginning of next year, and when they're doing the EIS, we probably will be moving very few kind of remote elements in the comprehensive plan because the EIS is going to help us with the draft plan at the very end. We don't want to discuss too many things before the EIS is done. So we'll go through the EIS process most of next year early, and then we'll probably come back to the draft policies mid-next year. So this is going to just help us go into that EIS process. It sets up a foundation. This is not the final policies. We'll probably have more changes that'll come, and we'll continue to discuss them. This is just a way to just have continuous public input throughout the entire process. The other thing, on a, before I jump into the draft policies and just kind of go over what we briefly did to address them without going into any detail, I'll also let the Planning Commission know that we are still working with Island County on the countywide planning policies and the growth-related discussions on housing allocations in the UGA. We have a tentative joint meeting scheduled at the end of this month, October 28th, between the City Council and Island County Commissioners, and they're going to take a look at whether approaching this UGA as a study area jointly is beneficial and whether we should enter into, in a local agreement to move that idea forward. So I think the idea is to just look at the UGA as a joint study area, not as a separate entity. The UGA is mostly under the county's authority because they have the permit authorities, not in the city, but we have planning authority. We have to plan for it with our infrastructure. So we need to find a way to work with each other, and I think doing a joint study with both our resources will be helpful, and I think that's what the commissioners and the City Council are looking to consider at a joint meeting this month. So that's a separate update on the side going on related to growth. So, jump into the, into the elements real quick. Just to give you an idea of the format of the policies that are presented in the packet for everybody at home, the Planning Commission packets are available online under the Planning Commission website, under the City of Oak Harbor website, and most of the attachments that we're discussing today is part of that, the attachments for the report. So the policies have been laid in a spreadsheet, about with four columns. The first column has the name of the element and the page from which it is in the current plan. They've also designated just a sort of a theme or subheading to it in order to determine what kind of a policy it is, just for tracking purposes. I think initially, when we were talking with Kimley Horn, and we still may go in that direction, is whether we wanted to readjust all these policies, whether we wanted to regroup them differently, but I think mostly we're sticking with the same kind of elements that we are right now. But anyway, they've categorized them as sub-teams just so that we can categorize them differently if needed. And then we have a column for the existing policy, proposed divisions, and some notes on maybe why the revisions were contemplated. So that's how the format is. Again, for the Parks Recreation and Open Space Element, we engaged the Parks Department in this review. They did a nice job of reviewing all the elements. In fact, they looked at the entire comprehensive plan and are also suggesting language in other parts of the plan where they think Parks is influenced by it. Parks Department, since the last update, has grown. Now it has the Marina, it has the Center, which was known as the Senior Center before, and it has the Parks Division, so now that is more of an umbrella department. So they took a look at it from that angle, and they, you know, changed some of the language to a maintenance-type language. If you notice some of the language change where the original policy was to go explore or adopt a code of some sorts, some of that work has already been done. We've already adopted a code or a guideline, but we don't want to take it out because we did the action. We still want to support that existing guideline that we adopted by including some maintenance language. So we've changed where actions have been done, just to give it more, still give it importance in the comprehensive plan. We've, we've changed it to a more maintenance-type language, so you'll see some of the changes in there. Do that. There are a lot of plans that are referenced in our comp plan. Some of them have been amended, updated, changed, so some of the changes are to reflect some of those changes and not make references to outdated plans. And then also, if the policy was not very clear, we attempted to clarify as best as we can in terms of the intent of why that policy is in there. Again, the economic development policy, this, we had our finance department and our city manager's office take a look at this set of policies. There are some new policies added in here just to keep it in, consistent with the state requirements. State requires some sort of language in there to make sure that economic development is compatible with land uses, so we'll see some policy added to make that connection. Some of these are obvious connections in our minds in terms of how we do it. It's just that the state sometimes requires us to have policies in place to indicate that intent. Again, I think there have been some policies added to kind of track economic, changing economic conditions, track employment capacity, or do a periodic review of these to kind of try and keep on top of that. Again, policies have been just adjusted to try and reduce barriers and take away those development regulation barriers that are hindering some redevelopment potential. Again, investing in the Marina, I think there was a lot of reference to the waterfront branding plan that was done years ago that has been updated since then, has become the Windjammer Improvement Plan. So the plan has been amended and updated, so we took the references out to those, and so those are some of the changes that were done in the economic development section. Government services, we had our police and fire department take a look at these policies and suggest changes. So if you see in the document, there are very, some very specific things that the fire chief and the police chief wanted to include in there to reflect what current practices in the, in the police and the fire world follow in terms of metrics, and so we wanted to make sure that they have a chance to include that changes, and again, some clarity of some markers and thresholds within those. And then we have a new element, the climate resiliency element. I don't know what the final name of the element is going to be, but for right now, I'm just calling it the climate resiliency element. It's been labeled very differently in different memos, but eventually, I think we'll get to one title. Anyway, it's a new element that we're adding to the comprehensive plan. This is again, a requirement from the state. We have got some grant money to look at this new element, so there's a sub-consultant that is working with Kimley Horn that is specifically working on the climate element for us, and they are reviewing our existing policies. And so there's a memo that's included in your packet that kind of outlines the process and the requirements of the House bills. You know, 1181, there was an evaluation done. There's a tool that the state provides in order to determine what hazards impact your particular region, and it was determined that sea level rise, extreme precipitation are the hazards that are most applicable to Oak Harbor as a region, and that was just what the tool said. And then the process requires you to go take some community input to determine if there are more hazards at the kind of ground level that wasn't captured by the tool that is being used at the statewide. And this is one of the questions that we had in the first comp plan survey that went out related to climate, and we got some responses on the wildfire and smoke-related comments that now Western Washington is being experiencing, and so we added that as a hazard that we should think about while we plan for our future. And then we also had the second OakPAC meeting last month, and climate resiliency was a topic there. There was good attendance, and we got some really good comments. The summary of those comments and meeting notes are in your packet. You can read through them. They gave us some really good input. And so extreme heat and drought related to transportation was one of the comments that came out of that in order for us to consider for, for our areas. So these are the, some of the hazards that our element is identifying, just to kind of start the conversation. Now, this element is not intended to start mitigating immediately. It's just opening up an element, starting to set some policy. In fact, if you look at the House bill, I think there's language saying you should have at least one goal or one policy, and we're having, we have four goals and we have several policies. So it's just, the intent, I think, from the state is to start the conversation at the community level and let the community through its planning efforts, and we'll go through this over the years and update this element, because once we have this element in our comp plan, and once every community has an element like this in their comp plan, then the state can start to say, let's see if we can bring some consistency, what can we do, you know, by addressing it in all these jurisdictions? So this is just the first step in trying to address it. So, you know, in the packet, we've put in the tools that were used to do the vulnerability study and the gap policies and so on. These, our consultants looked at the existing policies to see how climate change can be integrated into the existing policies. We also have some new policies that are, that are being recommended in other elements, and also new policies that are being considered for the new element. And all of this information is in your packet. I'm not going to go over all the new goals. I have one more slide if this thing switches, but, oh, there you go. Thank you. So the new policies, I think we have six new policies that are being proposed at this point, based on the comments that were received by OakPAC, based on some internal conversations with staff. They address overall resiliency, equity, sea level rise, extreme precipitation. Water resources was something, again, that was identified through local conversation because we get our water from Anacortes, and that pipe is a lifeline for Oak Harbor and all. And so that was identified as a very critical asset, and that we should find a way to make sure that we think about it and find ways to invest in it and protect that. So a policy came out of that discussion, and of course, the wildfire and smoke is definitely in everybody's mind. We went through a summer that we've been impacted by wildfire and smoke, so it's becoming more of a common thing. What do we do and how do we, what can we do to, to address those? So these are some of the policies that have been recommended. It's in your, in your packet, and the OakPAC discussion was very good because I'll just highlight one of the comments that kind of stood out for me in, in terms of why we have all of these discussions and why it's important to take input. You know, we were at the OakPAC meeting, and we're talking about all the sea level rise and the impacts to the shoreline, and what should we do with the uses and the land uses and the structures and the utilities, et cetera. And there were representatives from the tribes at the meeting, which is great. We have them in our OakPAC meeting, giving input to our comp plan, and they approached it from a very different angle, and they said, well, how do we protect the water, you know, from all these land uses? And it's a different perspective, and it's great to hear those kind of comments in terms of, as much as we talk about protecting all of the city assets, it's also important to kind of look at it from how do, how are we preserving the water quality, the marine environment, and how does that work with all the regulations that we're doing, and how do we support that? So interesting comments. Again, this discussion has been interesting. So with that, I will end my opening remarks and turn it over to the Planning Commission for question comments. I will just say, we can take comments in various forms, however the commission feels comfortable. If you have written comments, a lot of it, and you feel like you don't want to go over it line by line, feel free to, to give us a copy, or we'll make a copy for you and try and incorporate that into, into the draft. But if you definitely feel that there are comments that you want to discuss, that is worth discussing here and that you want more information on, let's definitely talk about it. We'll make a note of it and try to give you as, the best information that we can.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so with that, who would like to go first? Leader of.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kat, thank you very much for being here tonight. Appreciate it. As always, you do such an amazing job presenting everything. So I've, I've got a couple of questions, just for some clarification issues, and then a couple of comments, and then I'll turn over the rest of my questions to you after the meeting, and you can just take the slides.
Sounds good.
So for wildfires and smoke, most of that comes from either Canada or within the US, wildfires in the forest, or Eastern Washington, or in the state. Not sure what we as the city can do to prevent that, other than do our fair share of making sure that we keep our areas clean and keep the trees growing. That's just a comment. So moving along to item number, it's on the Goals and Policies page, page number 18, item number 1, 1 Charlie, 175 Police. It's written down here as existing policy, and there's no current changes to it, is to seek to maintain adequate police department staffing. I would, I would like to see us change and get rid of seek to, and just put down maintain adequate police department staffing. The reason why is leaving the word seek to maintain leaves a broad spectrum for a lot of various things to not have to meet and maintain our police department, and we need that. That's just as critical as the fire department from everywhere else I've read. And my point being is, on the very next page, page 19, item 2, 2 D as in Delta, 177 Fire Services. It is maintain fire protection staffing, not seek to maintain. So I'd like to see us make them both the same as just maintain our staffing as required for public safety. And I'll give these two to you afterwards, just so you don't need to write it down. Question, what does drought have to do with transportation? I, I just need to understand.
That's it. Maybe Erin can help us with, with that question, but that comment came from our OakPAC meeting and from our WashDOT folks that we have interactions with in, in the Mount Baker office regarding our plan, and that comment, both, I think, the, the extreme heat and drought as it impacts pavement is what I remember them mentioning, you know, what impact it's having to that surface, and how do we change that? That was the understanding. Erin, correct me if I'm wrong. If you have anything to add, please feel free.
Yeah, I'd be happy to add some additional context. So the gentleman from WashDOT mentioned that even though Oak Harbor is a shoreline city and likely to, or unlikely to anticipate extreme drought conditions, if drought were to occur in other parts of the state, and then also, Oak Harbor will be experiencing like more extreme heat, like variables than it, what they're used to, the pavement takes a toll in a different condition than what we're used to. So we would be planning for drought that's happening in nearby regions and the pavement conditions, and so that impacts Public Works planning and trying to make sure that the taxpayer dollars are going towards materials that are going to be resilient to those conditions. So it's not like economic or like the actual land and stuff is, is being immediately impacted by drought. It's more of a secondary impact that's happening regionally that he brought up, and so then we were like, okay, we'll talk to Public Works about trying to take in those considerations for future planning projects.
Okay, great. Thank you. In reference to that, on page 55 of 59, under the, I believe it was still underneath the Kimley Horn documents, it says assets SR20 drought impacts the soil under the concrete, extreme heat impacts the concrete itself. It might be feasible for us to reach out to some of the Midwest states who deal with extreme heat and extreme cold to figure out what they're doing so that we can meet that same requirement. Concrete, I don't know, but asphalt in extreme heat is definitely not good because it does melt and sink under weight, so anyhow, just, just a statement there. I won't cover that one. Just give that one. Okay, so part of the climate resilience part that we're putting to the piece of this puzzle, traffic impacts the climate as well, as we all know, and all the roundabouts that we're starting to put in are slowing traffic. It is not maintaining the flow of traffic, and I'm sure we could all talk about different roundabouts. It doesn't matter. It doesn't slow the traffic down. They're flying through at 40, 50 miles an hour, so just by putting it in, it's not really assisting us. And I know because I've almost been hit probably 50 times going to work in the morning down by Banta and Norts Gate. So part of that I wanted to say is, that was going to be a comment, putting more of these roundabouts in, in our city is not helping us. Putting more of these roundabouts in, in our city is not helping us.
I can provide some reference to the roundabout conversation, at least for FACOMA specifically. Both the county and the city had sent comments back to WashDOT saying that that was not our recommended choice. We did not get a lot of decision in that. Sometimes it comes from Washington State Department of Transportation, WashDOT. And so that's what happened with this. There were other projects that we even saw as a bigger priority. And so just know, sometimes the city has some ways that we can make comments or be involved in that process, but we don't make all of the decisions. And so we are continuing to work on that. That is what the IRTPO group at the county works on. And there are several municipalities and transit agencies involved in that. And WashDOT is on that call as well, and that is some of the things that we are advocating for when we're part, when we're attending those meetings. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, appreciate it. FACOMA was the least of my concerns, but it, all in all, I have not seen as a resident of Oak Harbor, how this has actually helped traffic flow. Maybe I don't see the big picture, but as someone who drives these roads, just like you all, every day, it hinders it. And with, I will throw this out there. This is something that maybe we need to, to look into. The FACOMA roundabout, since you brought it up, I was going to talk about that offline, but this, this is going to be an issue. It has already had traffic backed up through the intersection of Altfield and 20. So wait till the winter hits and the traffic is really backed up. We all know how that works on Altfield and, and 20 and Goldie and all that. That is, that is, it's going to be a showstopper on a major artery road. I'll leave that at that for us to revisit at a later date. Go ahead.
I just have one, one quick question about the FACOMA roundabout. So heading south, you're going up a, up a grade. That's the only way really to get into Oak Harbor. These tractor trailer trucks, they don't start up a grade real easy. You know, they, they hit that stop and they, they chug up the hill and that's why the two lanes were kind of there. What impact is having trucks stop at the roundabout and then try to get going? And like you said, especially in the winter when it's slick, you know, I could definitely see it backing up to Altfield Road.
Yeah, I'm not a transportation engineer, so I'm going to own that. But I will say.
That's fair.
I will say, our city engineer is looking at that. He is studying it and watching it very carefully. He has seen some of the trucks go over it and been watching that. And because of a request that our council had regarding the speed limit, because the speed limits were set at different speeds that were going in and out of that roundabout. So he is actually doing some additional studies around that to present to our council so that they understand that impact. And so he will be looking at that roundabout more.
Yeah, I mean, it, it seems like the way it was originally, you had two lanes there. One was a slow lane for the trucks to kind of creep up the hill. If they had a straight through bypass on that, that far side for trucks to be able to use, that might alleviate some of that too.
Yeah, I, I can share that feedback with the city engineer, but again, this is a WashDOT project, so I will make sure.
Yeah, I, I know it's kind of tricky when you start dealing with, with 20 and all that stuff, but thank you.
Yeah, no, I will share that.
All right. On page 39 of 59 on the Kimley Horn document, the last paragraph says, residents located adjacent to unstable slopes along Southwest scenic heights street and scenic heights neighborhood and mountain circle and Crescent Harbor neighborhood are more susceptible to landslide and significant structural damage. Historically severe storms in 2006 and 2015 were recorded to have dollar losses totaling approximately thousands of dollars respectively. As such, similar losses could potentially total similar monetary values or significantly higher. Talking about this, and I'm probably going to get yelled at from several different people, but one of the previous discussions were, I guess my question is, is if they live on a slope, they chose to live there. Shouldn't they be maintaining the slopes? Why is that part of the city's issue or is it? Because, and, and I don't mean to sound that wrong because I don't want anybody to lose their home, but at the same token, about six, eight months ago, I posed the question about when we were looking at changing height restrictions, what about the people who paid a million and a half dollars for their home because of a view? And now we're going to change the restrictions after they bought and then their value's no longer there? Well, that's not our responsibility to worry about. Now we're worried about people who bought land on a cliff and we're worried about their land. I'm a little concerned on why we're posing an issue for one set of folks and not another. I, I think we need to be kind of fair here. I know one's dealing with environment, but at the same token, I bought my house where I bought it and they're fixing to cut down a couple of thousand trees and I'm going to lose all of that nature and there's nothing I can do about it because that's where I bought it. So I guess I posed the question on, why are we concerned with that? That's an insurance for that homeowner and their responsibility. Yes or no? Maybe no, maybe no answer at this point. That's okay.
Yeah. No, yeah, no, no, that's, that's a very good question and these are key components of why we do plans. Why is a plan, what's the public benefit in some of these policies that we have? So when we talk about steep slopes or we talk about shoreline, et cetera, when the city was built and when these properties were developed, we didn't have all the environmental regulations in place or the requirement to review the risks involved with these hazards or anything like that. And so these uses have been developed in the, in the city historically. So in a way, the city has zoning designations and land use designations that allow for properties to be developed with certain potential. So in that way, you know, whether somebody chooses to live there and take the risks and so on, even though it's their own private decision that they chose to do that, the fact that these uses are allowed in these slopes to be built is just a generally citywide issue to be considered about. Secondly, I think these plans try to look at, there's, there needs to be a common understanding of what the issues are and what the measures for mitigation are. So the solution may not be a publicly funded way to secure it, but it may be a privately, when the land redevelops, you're supposed to do certain mitigation or you're supposed to do some armoring or you're supposed to do something. Eventually, the expense of doing some improvements may still be at the property owner level that chooses to live in those lands. However, these studies are intended to determine whether there needs to be additional regulations and requirements in order to make these safe. So that's the public benefit in doing these studies. It's not about making necessarily public infrastructure investments and that's still up to the city council to decide whether they want, you know, certain areas, do they need public investment to make, make these areas secure? That is still sometimes a choice that the community has to make. But the studies are intended to, from a public benefit standpoint, to identify these hazards, how to mitigate them. And then eventually the implementation, I think, will come down to the individual property owners, you through redevelopment or development permits of some sorts.
Okay, thank you. And the last, the last thing I have, go ahead.
I, that same thing, I, as, as I was listening, listening to him ask that question, I read it a little bit different, right? Like I don't see it as, as our responsibility to maintain their slope or their yard or anything like that. But if you read the, the paragraph right above that where it says, extreme precipitation can, or precipitation can cause secondary hazards like coastal erosion, liquidification, landslides, and, and mainly cause stormwater overflows and loss of function. So if you get a lot of rain and you have, you have to deal with that stormwater runoff, you don't want it running off to where you're going to cause damage to somebody's house. Not saying that, that the shoreline and all that is our responsibility to maintain, but you, by the same token, you don't want your stormwater running off to, to speed that along. Just like if I had a big parking lot and we have rain, I don't want the, the water running off into the road, creating a, a problem there. You see what I'm saying? That's, I, that's how I read it, is that we have a responsibility to deal with the stormwater runoff with extreme precipitation, not to cause damage to these coastal areas.
Absolutely. I mean, that's a great point to bring up. And if I can bring an implementation policy that we have that is related to exactly that is we require developers to do downstream improvements if the capacity is not sufficient. So if there's a development like for the Gary Oaks development, I think it's called Preston Heights now, which is on going south end out of town by 24th, there are stormwater drains, you know, east over the scenic heights. And they had to do a study to make sure that the outfall over there would be able to handle the stormwater runoff. It's a totally offsite improvement, but these plans and policies help us identify these requirements so that we can make sure that these offsite improvements are done as development occurs. So that's a great example.
Thank you for that clarification. The last thing I have is kind of a request, and I may have missed it, so if I did, let me know. But maybe we could put something in our new comp plan and, and some of our policies that since the environmental impact is, is a new area within, within our plan, maybe we could add in there something because as we're talking about with new heat and we're going to build all these new houses and it's going to add concrete and it's going to add new roads, all that produces heat as well, radiant heat. And so maybe we can minimize the amount of concrete and make sure that we emphasize more grass, which absorbs water. Yeah, it's more to maintain, but it, it'll actually reduce some of the heat, I believe. I don't know, I'm not an environmentalist, but I know for sure, concrete is definitely, the more concrete you put down, the more heat index you're going to have. And since we're talking environmental impact, maybe that might be something to look at. Not sure, like I said, I'm not an environmentalist, but it makes sense to me. Other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Chair. CAC, appreciate your time, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Next up, anyone have any big thoughts? Go for it.
Thank you, CAC. And that's my first, first comments. I just want to say, my time here on this board, I want to focus a bit on communication. So I was hoping to hit some broad points that kind of maybe discuss some of the potential communication things, and I'll, I'll give you an example of sort of my first point. When going through and doing the research for this and trying to do my homework, I did find it a bit hard to find online the existing comp plan. And I did find the, the plan for revision online, but it was kind of disconnected on the linkage. I was just wondering as a general comment about, you know, potentially making the comp plan a little bit more accessible on our website. Is, is there some way that we can make it more accessible on our website? Maybe link it to, since it's a primary thing that we're really focusing on, making a link closer to the homepage and organizing the documents as we're going through so that the public has a little more easy access to follow this process? I don't know if you were the right one to discuss with that or if you've got someone I could potentially bring that up to?
I'll jump in on that. So what I can do is if you have those comments, I can let our communications officer, Maggie Aguilar know, and she will take a look at that and make those adjustments on the website. So I'm taking notes as you're talking.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, and just going on with, again, more communication. You mentioned that this, the various aspects of this plan were reviewed by police, fire, et cetera. And that's excellent. I was just wondering, is there any plan to get, say, the Parks and Rec Commission to at least have a presentation to them? I, I know that we're the ones sort of making the recommendation to go to the city council, but you know, the, the entire Parks and Recreation section of this would be useful to have their input in some way, shape or form.
I, I believe, and I, I can follow up with our Parks and Rec Director, Brian Smith, but I believe he did share these with his, the park board.
Okay.
So I, I know that there was a discussion related to that with the park board. So I think they did that.
Excellent.
Yeah. And, and I actually attended the meeting to provide some clarification, so I was actually there when they discussed some policies, so.
I, I missed that. I tried going through their, their previous minutes and I, I missed when, missed that in their previous minutes in the past. But along with the review, I believe the fire department has the responsibility for the emergency, emergency action plan? Am I beginning that wrong? The emergency response plan with the new climate section and identifying potential hazards? Has the fire chief and the fire department looked at that for potential response?
I think, and I'll let Aaron address it, I think the tools have identified that these facilities need to be reviewed and, and looked at because they were just identified as potential hazards for further review. I think the fire chief and the police chief are aware of that. However, I don't think we have actual steps to what that review really means because it's just an identifier at this point.
Yeah, I saw in their particular sections, they reviewed, for instance, the fire department buildings and same with police department, they've reviewed their own. I didn't see anything in their particular sections that maybe the, a responsibility for review of this new section or at least some sort of ownership of potential new emergencies or something along those lines might be, might be in their purview since they're already taking some of this.
That's it.
I can add some context.
Go ahead.
Oh, so there's one important factor to consider when we're making this new element. There's already quite a bit of emergency planning in place and that's when the emergency happens. So when the fire happens, when the earthquake or something like that, there's a lot of, already there's a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, and then the fire departments do have a lot of planning for when it takes place. But this comprehensive plan is more looking at the long-term changes and steps before that were to happen. Let's say like before the fire happens, is there any way we can adapt to the smoke and the community can just be, obviously, we're not going to stop the fire if it's happening in Canada or something. Is there steps we can take land use wise to help us relieve some of the impacts from that? And then the same goes for flooding as well. So we're not, this comp plan is not talking about when the flooding's happening, people are going to evacuate and go this way and this way. There's already plans in place for that and those are under FEMA. But this is like, if flooding's going to happen in a few years, which we've seen and the projections it will, are there land use changes we could make now that would help save lives and property damage in the future? So those kind of smaller steps, just keep that in mind.
Thank you. That definitely adds a bit of perspective onto that. I also had a structural question, maybe that you can as well answer directly to this. The new section is purely focused on the new requirements or is, is this potentially an area that we can generally list hazards to the city, you know, specifically earthquakes? It's not change by climate change. I'm not, I'm not, I'm just asking like, that particular hazard doesn't appear to have a very specific section throughout our, our comp plan, and yet it's a very major risk to the city. And this type of review probably would be very useful for that type of, you know, the earthquake and tsunami hazard from Cascadia and a North Seattle fault rip, that kind of stuff. Is that appropriate here or is that not allowed by the, the policy, or not the policy, but the requirements?
It's not that it's not allowed. It's just that it's not particularly what the grant or the intent was originally when we started the element. So the state would like cities to make sure that we're reducing impacts from climate change as much as possible. So we're not, that, that definitely the, the earthquake discussion is a little bit of a separate topic. Now, that's not to say the state would prohibit you at all from, from doing any planning that you would like on your own, if you would like to install your own policies or any actions in place and start, and start doing those. There's, there's no requirement against that, but it's definitely not what was in, especially as a, as a consultant and what the state is looking at for the city, that wasn't in the scope for sure.
So maybe this question is to CAC. So maybe this question is to Cac, understood that we don't have grant money to redo for all those things, but potentially the section being a bit broader and at least mentioning other potential major hazards and that be, that the city should look at those as a policy and do a similar level of due diligence about the danger to the city. I mean, just in doing my review here, just as, for instance, the Washington State Department of Natural Resources has great GIS information on potential tsunami risks and it has a little pin on the center of Windjammer Park that says a 6.7 feet deep water swell will go over Windjammer Park, you know, potentially if Cascadia goes. So that's a major flood and danger risk, but you know, it's not really covered in our comprehensive plan as thoroughly.
Yeah, I mean, if other members of the commission are not opposed to it, we can see if we can include some draft language. I mean, I think, I don't know how much, I mean, I think we can, and Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, can we go beyond the scope of what the state has set to address earthquakes or is it considered a climate change type hazard? Or is it just, it's an hazard that can happen, right, at any time irrespective of climate change? And so, as you mentioned, there are emergency plans to, you know, what do you do when you get one, but what kind of policies do we, can we look at in order to address something like that?
Yes, so we can certainly address the planning commissioner's comment, I just don't think we're going to be able to do the in-depth level of like the impact of earthquake on specific assets as we have demonstrated in the memo that he's reading. I don't know if we could be able to go back and like do that in-depth analysis. So as a, like, alternative to being able to do that at this time, I would say you should be incorporating a policy, starting that stepping stone in the future so that the city can start allocating some budget or some time or some resources to actually earthquake impacts on the community and how you want to start taking those steps. It's just we're not going to be able to go back and do that analysis at this time.
And so I think that, to build off of that, right, we do have, right, like in the government services element, right, there is a goal and a policy related to emergencies and natural disasters and that's very broad, right? But maybe some more detailed about like how we court, like what emergencies and what type of natural disasters are coordinated through the emergency management plan or like specific things we want to focus on. I think that, right, because like, you're right that earthquakes don't necessarily like pop up here explicitly and I think that that might be a sort of in line with like our value policies to say like, we recognize earthquakes and these other things like tsunamis as potentially like needing direct attention, we fit it into like, I think it's goal three or policy three of the government services, that might sort of mesh all that together.
Yeah, so I think that the general idea here is maybe do a review to say, if we drag all the things that identify, hey, all the things that say something along the lines of identify hazards and plan for them as a general section, that this anchors because it's really well done as far as identifying hazards and planning for them, but broaden it out to be more than just climate impacts, even though that right now, the body of the detail is climate impacts, but we could, you know, we could use that as a good pattern to expand to other potential hazards that maybe deserve as much or more attention due to their potential severity. I'll continue on with the, you know, kind of the broad things that I've got on here. I have a lot of detailed comments and in fact, like you said, I'll give, I'll hand them off to you after this or at least find a way of getting them to you after this, but broadly, I had a, the parks section seems very, how to put this, wish list oriented and I see a lot of language inside of there that isn't actionable and isn't measurable. And, you know, it would be great if we could do a review of, you know, kind of actionability and measurability and I have individual comments on those and I'll hand those off to you, but things along the lines of, you know, we should get extra data, but it doesn't say things that's actionable like, we shall present once a year to the city council this extra data. You know, that's the difference between actionability and just kind of a wish list thing. That's a general comment for all sections, but I'd say, I'd argue that the parks section has a lot of that very general unactionable or unmeasurable kind of stuff. And then very specific to the parks section, I don't see that it mentions the trade-off between open space as a good thing for people to enjoy and walk through and how open space in the city forces the city to spread out more. So if your goal is to preserve beauty and natural forests, then by saying I'm going to have big parks inside the city, that means I've got to have more city outside eating into our parks and forests. So there's quite a few comments inside, or quite a few goals and things inside the parks that just say space for space's sake, and it's not to say we shouldn't have parks, it's, I, the general feel for me is that they should be a lot more targeted about why we should be preserving space and planning strategically about the needs of the city as it grows and how that space is critical to the internal health of the city and how the trade-off of expanding the city out for that extra space that's been taken up in, you know, should be weighed at each one of those decisions. Does that make sense? And again, I have specific comments on these that I can give you, it's just a broad area for the parks area.
Well, depending on how detailed your comments are, I may want to preface that, my comments by saying, well, the Parks and Recreation and Open Space Plan is going to be updated in a separate effort. So the directions to the existing staff was just, this is the existing utilities and comment on the existing utilities, we're not going to try and create a new workflow because they have workflows, they have work programs that they are hoping to base on the new plan that doesn't sync with our existing plan. So instead of spending a lot of time in this, at this time in the comp plan and trying to get into the details, they wanted to reserve a lot of it for when the actual Parks Plan planning comes up because then a lot more detail in terms of their operations, actions, and goals will get reflected. And this is not a full review of the Parks and Recreation Plan itself, this is just the policy. So they are just doing what I want to say, a satellite review or a flyby review of these policies to get us through this planning effort. And so that's why maybe a lot of it is still left general, but they are, I know Brian has a lot more detailed comments on the policies, a lot more changes he wants to tackle with when the adoption is, just that we don't have the bandwidth right now to consider a lot of changes to the policies as an individual discussion topic. Parks is a very interesting topic and the whole community wants to get involved and so they're trying to channel that for a specific effort and we're also not trying to re-call the entire Parks Recreation Plan with this round of review. I'll just say that, not saying that we don't want to accommodate changes, I'm just trying to keep the changes general at this time, if they're not hurting us or harming us because a lot of this will change in a year or two. A lot of our transportation policies will change in a year, a lot of our stormwater policies, water system policies will change in a year or two because they're all being updated as the 20-year plan and will get more updated policies.
So with that, that actually rolls into another generic comment I had, it seems like the plan, we have a lot of plans that actually this plan would be delegating to, but should give, you know, give direction to. So for instance, you know, the planning that you just mentioned, why wouldn't it make sense for the parks section to set the authority to delegate that section to a different planning effort and then scope it and then remove the goals, specific goals, or maybe at least remove the specific policies and keep the high-level goals and say, the planning and detailed work of that is delegated off to another plan? That would help keep this fresh because you have the smaller planning effort that is getting the attention and keep it focused on the high-level goals and the high-level requirements. Is that something that is acceptable in this plan? I'm not sure of the legal requirements to, for what should be documented in here.
It's a choice of the community. I mean, there's no prescription in terms of how it should be done. There are communities that will have four, sometimes five or six overarching goals in their comp plan that directs their Parks and Recreation Plan, which is then a 20-year plan and holds more details. And then there are communities that will just have a separate Parks and Recreation Plan, take the policies from that and put it in their comprehensive plan as a way to just bring consistency. So we are of the second kind with the Parks and Recreation Plan has been its own plan before there was a comp plan, there was a Parks and Recreation Plan, so it has had its own updates as it has gone through. And so we've tried to incorporate that with the GMA and the comp plan and into the policies, but our comp plan goals and policies just basically reflect what's in the Parks and Recreation Plan. So when they update that, we'll get those policies and update our comp plan with the annual amendment process and we'll go and update all our policies at that time. So when they go to update their Parks and Recreation Plan, their consultants or whoever's working for them will be asked to review our comp plan for consistency and so they'll have suggestions and changes to do.
Would it be valuable then to put that process, at least document that process in that section, in the section? You know, unfortunately, I don't have it sitting in front of me, but the comp plan for each section has some great overviews of metadata like, you know, population or, you know, firefighters per population, that kind of stuff at the top. Since this is effectively a subordinate to the Parks and Recreation Plan as you're describing it, would it be valuable to describe that subordinate relationship inside the comprehensive plans so that when someone reading it understands that this is, right here, what you're seeing is not fresh because of that and this is really where you should be looking and it's only added for reference?
Yeah. The, there's a section of the existing comprehensive plan that introduces the comp plan and has all of the referencing documents that are referenced into the comp plan and the state allows you to do it by reference. So if you reference your comp plan to say, the sewer element reflects all the policies of the sewer, comprehensive sewer transportation plan or whatever, you know, you can, so your comp plan extends into all of these other plans through references. So all of those become part of the comp plan by reference. So you can connect those documents by, in the comp plan, as you mentioned, establish a process in terms of what the connection is with each one of them.
Yeah, and mentioning as a reference seems to, it might be, because I was definitely confused that by that point, I didn't, you know, I tried to read through these sections and it never once, I never once was able to make that connection, so if others, if I wasn't able to make the connection, others might. So it might be worth some wording right there to make it explicit at the point of use inside the document, to make the document more usable, right? Like down below, here are goals and policies, but this is, these are goals and policies taken from this plan and this plan is subordinate to that very explicitly right there, even though it's included elsewhere or in other locations.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, we can include that in this one.
Let's see, there is also just a general theme I see in many of these goals and policies of regional, I hear it often, especially in parks, say, hey, one of their goals is to promote a regional ballpark, but then it doesn't define any kind of regional ties to make that happen or it just seems like they're trying to get a grandiose word in there without saying how it'd actually become regional. Is Island County getting involved, is Coopville getting involved? But this regional aspect I see worded in a couple of different places and again, I've got some detailed examples that I'll give off to you after this. Wherever I see the word regional, I like to understand what that regional tie means and not just make it sound more important because we've got a regional ballpark, no, how, what's the meaning behind that word there? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I think the intent is to keep it general and I think you're asking for more specificity and it's just changed over time. When sometimes the consensus on when, how to do something cannot be reached or at the planning stage is not important, we keep our comments general. So when the planning for a regional facility does take on, then all the details are worked out in terms of what is this a regional facility, who should the partners be, what is the inter-local agreement? There's a lot of details that can be captured once a project is decided to be implemented on. So usually the plan, an idea is captured in the comp plan so it doesn't get lost, but you usually have subsequent plans and the timing and opportunity and financing in place that can come up. So I view the comprehensive plan as having ideas farther than 20 years. Even though it's a 20-year comprehensive plan, there are ideas that have been carried over multiple updates because the time and the opportunity was not there to do it within a certain time and some of the ideas are not ripe. However, there's a desire from the community members to have that as an option when you consider some ideas. So, you know, the community in the past wanted to capture the idea of shoreline redevelopment, whether you had funding for it or not or whether you knew how you were going to do it or not, it was just an important feature that they needed to capture. And if you feel like there's a facility that you want to have more funding than just the city or maybe serving more than just the city, the scale is large, but it's just an idea, you just haven't laid out all the framework for actually getting there, you still want to capture the idea. I think those are how these, some of these policies may have gotten in, they are ideas to explore a regional facility or something like that and to keep it in the radar of the community as wants and desires and needs as you go into the 20-year practice, even though you didn't have the funding or the mechanism to make some of these happen right away.
As someone's trying to read it all through, when I read some of these, I think that maybe, I understand the trying to keep them broad and all that, but with a fresh eye, there's insufficient details for me to understand where I would begin if I were to take that policy and try to implement it. That's where I'm coming from, like the regional or in other comments.
Absolutely, I want to say, I wish we had the resources and the wherewith to implement every policy in the comp plan and I just want to say upfront that that is not what we're going to aim for. It's a, it's a, it's a collection of ideas and document that gets implemented over a long period of time. So we don't want to limit ourselves to capturing only what's practical in the 20 years, I think that's very limiting and doesn't allow us to be creative. We do want to have that creativity and have the opportunity to explore things, so we want to keep it wide. So that's why some of these are so general, you may think, why do we have this policy in here? It's a common sense, you know, those kind of things, but we still have to state it in order to prove intention in when we're applying for grants, in order to support an existing regulation that we already have in our books, we want that backbone support in our comp plan. So there are some policies in here that are just meant for that. Not all of them are meant to become a product or some type of implementation, they're also there to support our regulations that we have.
Those are the big general comments, I've got, I've got very specific comments throughout everything and.
Yeah, if you have specific comments, I would recommend giving it to Sarah, so have a copy of it, it gets into the minutes, so other commissioners can see the comments as well. And so that would be the best way. If you have any comments, please give it to Sarah, we'll just make a copy and that way it just becomes part of the record as a comment that's coming back to us.
Is it possible to give you an email of it after this or give, possibly tomorrow, I want to, these are all written from me, I'd rather like get it in a format that would be a little more generic to send off to you?
Yeah.
Sure. All right, I'll try to get that to you in the next day or two. Thank you.
Thank you. That's awesome, good comments. That's awesome. Good comments.
Anyone else next up?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say I love this conversation, right? You know, from the council perspective, you know, we're actually looking to this group to do exactly what you're doing, which is the heavy lifting of the document. I mean, ultimately, there's going to be a point where they're going to come to this body and ask for your recommendation involving these documents and forwarding that recommendation onto council, and council is counting on you guys for this deep dive, right? We're counting on you to look at existing policies and see if those make sense. You know, this comp plan, of course, you know, this little, I guess, for anybody who might be listening, and just from, I guess, my own gratification, you know, the comp plan is something that we update every year, right? The difference is, this year, we've been mandated to update our comp plan and look at our comp plan with relation to an expanding number within the city, right? Which, a normal comp plan update, we may come through with what, maybe three or four items within a comp plan update in an annual basis.
So terminology, what you're referring to are, we do annual amendments.
Amendments.
And what we're doing right now is an update. So this is a minor difference, but yes, that's kind of.
Yeah. You know, we do our updates typically every 10 years.
10 years.
10 years. So this is some heavy lifting, right? This is, this is setting a much bigger, broader plan than when we're just bringing forward an amendment that addresses, you know, one thing that we're working on. At the same time, you know, to get to Jeff's point, which I loved about the generalities, you can be too general, but then you can be too specific. I think one of the items we have being removed from the plan is the idea of building a performing arts center in Windjammer Park. Because we actually noted in there, in Windjammer Park, and I don't know why we, quite frankly, did that, because, I mean, the effort's still moving forward. I think we've just all decided that in Windjammer Park is not necessarily where it's going to end up. But you can see where getting too specific also kind of throws everything off. But, yeah, I mean, this is a big thing, you know? We're looking at updating this plan to accommodate all of this growth, and so any addition that you see here should be an addition to make sure we're handling that additional growth. Any omission that you see here, the thing that you're crossing off, should be, again, keeping in mind that we're handling additional growth, right? And additional growth do mean things more regional and stuff, because the reality is, let's face it, O'Harbor's Parks and Recreation System serves the greater community, right? But you're right. What does region mean? Are we talking about the north end of the island? Are we talking about island county? Are we talking about island and part of Skagit County? You know, those are all valid questions, but I just wanted to say, I love the deep dive, because that's really what, as a council, we're hoping that this committee does. We rely upon you guys to go in, look at all of these little individual questions, even if you think it's something minor. That's what we're counting on you to do, so that when this document moves forward to us, it's been refined, obviously through public comment, through different meetings, but quite frankly, through this body. So just wanted to say, love it, and I appreciate you guys' time and efforts. And again, look forward to when we get you a full body up here, right? Because there's been a few of you carrying a pretty heavy load for quite some time. So appreciate you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. All right. My turn. And I have some specific things, but mostly I wanted to build off of what was said earlier, right? I think that, to echo about the parks and rec element, I think the economic development and government services existing policies, I think it makes sense to go through those a little bit more and see, like, which ones can become more actionable. I think a lot of them have a lot of, like, should, like, we should consider this, and like, I think you can pull out some of that, like, language to say should, and just if we want to consider. I think that that's a great way to navigate that. There are two other plans that the city and then sort of the region have, right? The active transportation plan, which I think would be useful to fit into the parks and rec element somewhere to make reference to that, to say, like, our goals of expanding the pedestrian and bicycle network are to serve a purpose, and they can connect to recreation opportunities, and they can in of themselves be recreation. So I think that that would be a useful sort of call-out to say that that, not only does that impact transportation, but parks and rec as well. I think that that's a useful thing to line up. And then similar with our economic development element, we have our comprehensive economic development strategy that the county and the region did, and I think that there's language in that plan to, that can be connected to our economic development, sort of overarching goals. And so I think that that is a useful, another useful sort of connection point. And I do like the idea of saying, like, we do have all of these sort of very detailed, very specific plans on how we implement and how we sort of directly engage with projects, and the comprehensive plan sort of is that sort of binding focus that takes, you know, gives those project, those more project-specific plans direction. I think that that's a really useful way, and how we communicate that by either, you know, calling them out specifically or providing links in a digital format. I think all of that is really useful. There, I think there was a specific policy, well, there's another specific policy that I think would be useful as it relates to parks and rec, and then sort of the equity component of the climate element is sort of more proactive mapping of access, right? And so in the context of parks and rec and open space, to say, like, here are, here are our parks. I'm from Iowa, so it becomes two of the same word. Our, our. Mapping where those parks exist, and if we define a radius around them that can be a proxy for access, whether that's, you know, a quarter mile, or 15 minutes, or however we want to do that. I think that that potentially provides that sort of binding of why are we looking to improve or acquire or navigate park space in the city? Where is it most targeted to do the most public good? I think that that's a useful sort of data point to build into our comprehensive plan as a way to evaluate those facilities. And then I think that really the big one, not the big one, one that I noticed and I wanted to bring up here, so this is page 24, policy 6 dot 6E. I think this is in the government services. Maybe, sorry. Where'd it go?
6E?
6E, yes.
6E?
Yes. So in, so 6D and 6E in the government services element, or government services section of, no, it's element, yep. We talk about the planning commission, right? And we talk about our public engagement and our advisory groups, and I guess this is me trying to say, are there additional benefits, other ways to advertise or provide recognition to, like, our volunteers and these boards to say, like, as a way to improve sort of that outreach and volunteerism for them, right? Like, is there a way that, at a high level in our policies, we can say, these groups are important, we want to make sure that they are fully staffed and fully, like, volunteered, and there is additional sort of money where the city's mouth is to do that? Not actual money, but like hypothetically. I think that that's a really interesting one to sort of see if there's proposed policy revisions that could be useful in sort of that retention. I think that that's all I really had. I mean, great work, as always. I think, yeah, with our water resources and the climate element, trying to find ways that we can put policies to support Anacortes and how, you know, what we can do as an end-user of their system, what we can do to be better partners in that, I think is really useful. And then just sort of a broad thing about part of, at least how I interpret the climate resiliency element, is that, like, not only is it preventing, or not only is its sort of goal to prevent adverse impacts to property and people, but it's also, like, how do we, how do we protect that? Like, how do we protect the people through either programs or through infrastructure or regulations in, like, those specific areas, right? Like, going back to, like, wildfires, like, we are not going to be able to prevent wildfire, like, but how do we, as a city, protect those who are vulnerable to smoke or to, you know, working outside when we're in, like, summer heat and all those types of things? So I think that that's sort of where those fit together. So that's all I have. I think that everything else was covered pretty well. And if you all have any last questions, any other last thoughts?
Sorry. I had, I realized I had two cleanup items, I missed, you know, that were kind of more generic or were an informative bit. Just one generic thing, there's a lot of kind of meta-information at the top of each of these sections. Can you talk about how that's going to be updated? Like, for instance, talking about the number of firefighters, the number of police, the number of, you know, firefighters per thousand that we currently have? All that information is obviously becoming stale. Is, when in the process does that get updated?
With this comp plan, hopefully we'll have all of that existing data updated. Are you talking about just the comp plan? Are you talking about other plans?
Just the comp plan specifically, because, you know, we're reviewing these sections, and this is an obvious scenario, a section that needs to be reviewed, but it's probably too early to review it. I just want to make sure that I didn't see where in the process the stuff that's just pure data gets updated, so to speak.
Yeah. I'm thinking, Aaron, that, you know, the language that supports these policies and in a document format that provides all the supporting information around these policies will come along with the draft plan. Is that how that would work?
Yeah. We've already been in the process of updating all the necessary data, but then the EIS will also incorporate additional data analysis on top of that that we're going to incorporate. So it's kind of a very long process, but ideally, we would time it up all up where the full, the lease of the full draft would have all the data and the policies. So you would get the existing conditions with the policies in full context.
Sweet. And just along with that, is there a plan to find sort of the surprising changes to help us understand and quantify policies or goals that might need to be adjusted due to surprise? You know, changing the number of police officers by two is not a surprise, but the department doubling in size can be a surprise worthy of note on policies or goals. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And, sorry, CAC to jump in, but we've been trying to mitigate that by delay, by, like, releasing these policies in the way that we have so far because of, we did the utilities and government services, or, sorry, we did some of the elements earlier on, but then we're doing the land use a little bit later so that we have the EIS, because this is all kind of, this is all dependent on the growth projection that's being accepted by the city for this comp plan update, and that impacts services and utilities, which impacts, you know, police and blah, blah, blah. So there's still a little bit of a chain reaction during the EIS that we're going to be fleshing those answers out a little bit. So that's why we've kind of put some policies up here at the front to do an early check of policies, but then we'll be coming back around once the EIS goes through. CAC, I don't know if you want to add additional context?
Yeah, no, I think you captured that. I think we're trying to gain input in terms of what's important to the commission and the community as we go through the review and not kind of tackle a lot of these comments at the end. So we're going to, so what you're looking at is just like the raw policies alone, none of the supporting documents, we're not looking at the maps that are in each of these. You know, if you look at the existing element, the economic development section has some stats on employment and all of that stuff. So all of that information will get updated. These are just the policy reviews. So information such as what you were mentioning in terms of how the park policies, how they're incorporated between the parks plan and the comp plan, all of that discussion will come in those introductions and supporting material that's written. So we're not, we don't have that drafted yet. We're just kind of looking only at the policies at this point, and so that's why it looks a little crude and unsupported, but the supporting information is all going to be coming later on.
Sure. No, I understand. I think it's just, not just, I think it'd be helpful, especially as we review more and more sections, to say, the early data says we have a surprise here that might be worthy of pointing out, you know, to help us cage our comments about policies and where we might need to focus. We've been understanding that exact data's not in, it won't be in for a while, just focusing on the surprise elements to help us kind of, you know, give us the early peek, so to The other, the other comment I had was actually because I, just, you know, full disclosure, I live next to a developer who talks to me regularly about his problems, and there was a lot of discussion about, there's a lot of discussion in the comprehensive plan about permitting and trying to be efficient and all these different things. And he mentioned that, he mentioned that permit kind of shepherd program would be useful for helping developers work through problems. I don't know enough about this subject at all to make a comment on whether this is a good idea or not, but I wanted to bring it up to this group here that has a lot more experience to, you know, to try to get a question of, is this an area where we would want to potentially look at more policies or goals around permitting to help support developers with their problems? His specific, you know, concept was the permitting process is actually more of a partnership and less of a sanity check, where, you know, the partnership is trying to find solutions to problems, not just to point out problems and walk away. And reviewing our current permitting and all that, I didn't see anything that specifically tries to point that concept out, that the goal of permitting isn't to stop you, it's to help you figure out a good path through things. So again, it's a general comment. I didn't have a specific way to craft language or think about that specifically, and, you know, the group here probably has a bit more experience, and I just wanted to bring it up as a possible discussion point, since it was an actual comment from a local person does development. I'll leave it at that.
Sure. In the context of, like, the comprehensive plan, CAC, I guess this is a question for you, CAC. Do we have, I didn't see in, like, government services, or do we have policies around the permitting process? Or is that something that sort of gets handled through municipal code and would be better in a different sort of context?
Most of the permitting processes are highly regulated. I'm not sure what type of policies we would want to consider. A lot of it is just following state rules for timelines and things like that. And it's more internal policy than actually anything external. So I can understand, I mean, over the years, just, you know, we've had always challenges between permitting and development or developers based on various investment levels, interest levels, and things like that. So it's more of an internal policy than a comp plan policy, if you ask me. But, you know, the city went from paper permitting to online permitting just about three, four years ago, so it is a process that is vastly improved since five, 10 years ago. But however, the new system brings more tracking and more communication between all the departments and better review and efficiency. It is impacting maybe some people that are shy to online systems. It is impacting maybe some people that are shy to online systems. And we have several cases where people come in and get our assistance. We, we've had stations in the front of our office where we can walk people through our online system, basically, in order to get them used to it. So we, we've had those kind of training opportunities for people difficult, but, I mean, but this is an ongoing and changing circumstances, so I'm not sure if permitting would be, I'm not sure how permitting policies adopted in the comp plan can turn around to be more implementable, implementable, based on regulations, et cetera, that keep changing constantly. So I think we, this is more of an internal stuff, I don't know if it's a policy at the comp plan level. That's my initial take on, on trying to consider something like that.
I think if we want to continue this conversation, I think we can, if we don't have anything left for the comprehensive plan process, we can move to our commissioner updates, does that, or do you have, anyone else have any comprehensive plan questions? Okay, I think of that.
I have one additional thought on that. Sorry, CAC, do you mind if I say something?
No, please.
So I do, this is just going again off of what the commissioner just mentioned about the developer permitting stuff. We haven't talked about the housing policies yet for the comprehensive plan, that we will do like a first dip into housing and land use, but it's going to be quite a big conversation for this periodic update, but we haven't started that yet. Like, there's a housing needs assessment that we perform, and, you know, we haven't talked about that with the planning commission yet, again, because we've been kind of slowly getting into the more intricate topics of this update. But I will say that a recent trend that's been happening is like, as people are going into the housing issues that they're facing, there are certain times where some communities during the periodic update have been like, okay, we so urgently need this particular type of housing, that they will start planning easier ways or incentives or other opportunities to ease the permitting process for that specific type of housing. And so with the new housing requirements that are coming from the state, you're required to plan for like multiple different types of housing. You can't just say like, all your housing is single family anymore. So what we're finding in the data is that some cities will find there's like a huge lack of like triplex, duplex-type housing, they have a huge deficit, and they're like, oh, okay, shoot, we need to expedite a permitting process so that we actually are able to see some recovery in those unit types. And that's coming, this is all directly from the state, because those unit types are historically more affordable to a certain lower income bracket, because we're supposed to be planning for income levels. So we haven't gotten to that discussion yet, but that's kind of alluding to what the planning commissioner just mentioned, so you can keep that in mind for a later discussion point when you're looking through the housing policies.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point. I mean, we can target very specific development types for incentives and fee waivers, et cetera, while we look at the policies, and those type of policies can be captured in the thing. But in terms of actual permit processing, I think a lot of those are just in either state regulations or the municipal code in terms of how we tackle them. And then internal workflows in terms of whether it's online and how they get done and how an applicant is involved in the process, we're continually refining that in order to do that. And our goal, at least in development services, is to try and give the applicant as much information ahead of time, educate them as much as possible in terms of what they need to do with the current regulations, et cetera. But we definitely want, we'll say, we do come across a lot of ideas that just won't work in Oak Harbor sometimes, and we give them all the information and current plans, we give them the options on how to change, how to tackle the change, and so on, so that they can consider all their options. So we try and provide, from a development review standpoint, I know our development review reviewers across all departments are trying to do the best to accommodate what we think is viable for, for Oak Harbor in the safest way possible, making sure that our fire department is involved in the review, our building department is involved in the review, and that we make sure that whatever is being proposed can be, in the long run, you know, serviced by our urban utilities and our emergency services as well. So sometimes we get changes and requests that pushes the threshold of how we can deliver emergency services and safety for some of the construction types, and so, but we are, as a development community and as planning agency, we're open to a lot of changes and have been continually, and I think planning commission is aware, if you look at the last three or four years worth of agenda, we bring forth a lot of court amendments to try to continually keep the development community's options open for development.
So just to close the loop on this, the reason why I brought it up in the first place is because page 190 of the comp plan, page 25 of the pack at Goal 7, specifically talks about permitting process and goals around permitting. That's why I brought this, this into the discussion at this point, but I think that likely is appropriate to look at it later on, but if, I will add, if that is appropriate there, then we may want to look at removing the permitting stuff that's in the government services and potentially moving it to those other locations.
Yeah, I was just going to comment, you know, I mean, the reality is, you know, whether or not the comp plan, I would think it would be a place that we would put how we're dealing with ongoing policies in a, because it is a broad swoop, and, and, you know, to what you addressed, CAC, you're right, we are constantly reviewing and updating where allowable our planning and permitting policies to create for efficient policies that allow for the construction of all types of housing as needed by the community, because that's a constantly changing pace, and maybe that's what goes in the comp plan, right? We're actually doing that, it should be something we should be continuing to do, we should be reviewing and updating these plans every time we get an opportunity to make that as efficient as possible to, to be able to build what the community needs here. And those needs are going to change, and how we, how we change those policies to fulfill those needs are going to change over the life of this comp plan, but I think that statement remains steady. And then, and back to some of the comments, you know, about open space and park plans and stuff, you know, I guess another thing would be, you know, the city's commitment to maintain an open space plan. I mean, that, that is, you know, part of, I would think, a long-term commitment and part of our long-term comprehensive plan, and maybe that is where that addresses that link internally within the comp plan, and of course, that maybe is your creation of that link to that open space plan within the comp plan, is the fact that we are just going to maintain and update that plan moving forward.
Absolutely, and just FYI, if you haven't seen the park plan, or if you have seen it, there are, the actual 20-year plan does have, I think, a sort of level of service analysis. I like Commissioner Josh's suggestion on connecting the active transportation plan, because I think the park plan identifies in the write-up somewhere that find ways to connect parks and schools. So when the park plan at one time was being developed, it was explored as a way for a drop-off site for children so that, you know, a school bus or some carpooling can happen to schools without having to take all the cars to the schools, you go take it to the close by parks, and you carpool, and then the kids go to school. So all those type of ideas were floated when the park plan was updated during the time, and so there were some policies and some written descriptions written in order to explore trails and connecting pathways between parks and recreation centers and schools as a first priority. So if you look at the actual parks plan, there is a core development area, which is kind of, you know, if you look at Widby Avenue that goes east-west, it's one of the few streets that actually goes through all of Oak Harbor through east-west, and if you notice all this, most of the schools and the fire stations and the utilities are located on Widby Avenue on both sides. And so the parks plan actually identifies that area as a priority for your bike lanes and your pedestrian pathways and connections. So at a very general level, it says, focus your, your, your resources in trying to make this area connectable. And then the park plan also has a long-term trails that connect all the way around the city, in, you know, connecting county resources, Joseph Widby State Park, and so on. So, you know, more than a 20-year plan, it also talks about a 70-year plan or a 100-year plan to get these trail connections. But also, the park plan has a level of service analysis in terms of walkability, in terms of neighborhood parks and community parks, and identifies areas where we don't have neighborhood parks in the city. So, for example, the area east of Midway, north of Pioneer, all the way to Widby, doesn't have a park. And even though it's in the center of town, and it's cut off by major, you know, look at all the other neighboring neighborhoods, there are parks all in those neighborhoods, but you have to cross a major street if you live in that neighborhood, if you want to go to a park. And so the park plan identifies those areas, and, and there have been conversations in the past on whether we have too much parks, that was, that was one of the conversations. It's called the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, I'll give you a little history on that, and first it was the Parks and Recreation Plan when the, when GMA first plan was adopted, and I think there was actually an advocacy group that came forward and said, Oak Harbor's comprehensive plan does not address open space, and it needs to address open space. And I think either there was a growth management hearings board or somebody that said, yes, the Oak Harbor's comp plan should consider it. And so the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan was created, and parks were supposed to encompass some of those open space needs in the community, and that justified the need to have more neighborhood parks, as you had mentioned, with the growth that you experience in the community, with the density that you experience in the community, how do you manage the open space? And Oak Harbor is actually blessed with about 30 or so neighborhood parks, there's not that many communities that have that many neighborhood parks. And at one time, there was, and this is maybe 10, 15 years ago, for budgetary reasons, because the Parks Department had so many requests and so many needs for maintenance and improvements just because of the amount of land that they, that the Parks Department maintains, there was discussions on whether some of these parks should be considered to be abandoned and turned over into, and so there was some conversation about how to preserve those. And so I think with more and more densification, the policy that you mentioned, how do we balance between, you know, growth in the city and, you know, without taking up the space outside of the city, how do we maintain that balance is by preserving those, those park spaces over a long period of time so that you can maintain that open space as the density occurs? And I think Oak Harbor is situated well enough, as long as it preserves its existing parks and acquires new neighborhood parks as it grows, I think you should be able to support and balance that open space. And I think the Parks Plan, at least the current one, captures it. When they update it, we'll have to see if most of that information transfers in that. And so some of this is captured in our existing parks element in the comprehensive plan, because it's a summary or an executive summary of everything that's in the plan, but some of these maps may not transfer, there are in the park plan that shows all the neighborhood parks, the coverage and so on, the connectivity. So just FYI, I just wanted you to know that we do have information on that, and if we need to bring some of that into the comp plan, we can.
Very good, very cool. All right, any last things? All right, also, I guess, for the record, we, we lost Commissioner Wilson, he had other things to attend to, so that was about 7:24, so for the record, we have that change in attendance. Okay, so I'll move on to general member comments. Anyone have anything they want to bring up? Any last thoughts? Okay, the one thing that I do have a question about is, do you all have good metrics on how many people watch our recordings for the planning commission meeting?
So we can tell on YouTube exactly who watch live and afterwards, Facebook, is that we share those numbers already? So, and we can tell on YouTube where they're watching from? So we can find out if they're from Canada, Oak Harbor, California, Arizona, so.
It kind of depends on how deep we want to dig into the data afterwards.
For sure.
It is interesting, sometimes Tim and I from here will see like a spike, a decrease, a spike, especially when council's talking about a certain subject matter, we'll see that. So if you want that data, that's something that we can pull and provide as needed.
Mostly, I just wanted to, knowing that we oftentimes say, like, for the people listening at home or watching later, and like wanting to make sure that that's like actually happening, and they're, more, yeah, more than, more than the people that are here in the audience are more than the people who are online now, but I would rather not.
Then you'll get the room filled. Councilmember Rees has seen that.
We do it all the time.
And, and you know what, Sarah and I can talk to Maggie about maybe some ways that we can get that data for you guys and even add that to the meeting minutes or something, just to kind of show what that reaction is.
Cool.
If we can talk about pickleball, I bet you that would get our numbers up.
Pickleball, basketball, parks, those are all great topics.
Yeah, or, do we have any art that we're going to start doing? All right.
You're really trying to fill the room.
I'm really trying. Yeah, and as always, right, we have two vacancies for the people listening at home, if you're interested, we're a riveting group of people to talk to.
And Maggie did push those out, our communication officer, she pushed out some promotions around that recently, and she's been doing it again. So we're trying as much as possible to get that out there.
Very good, all right.
Well, we need Eddie's commercial.
Yeah, there you go.
Your commercial.
All right, so with that, our, our next meeting is going to be November 12th, 2025, that is going to be a Wednesday, which is different from our normal, normal day, but same time at 6:00 PM. So mark your calendars, show up if you'd like, please show up. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
One last thing, I just, sorry, no, I didn't mean to interrupt your adjournment, but on the 28th of this month, which is typically the city council's workshop, we are doing a joint meeting with the county commissioners to talk about a potential ILA related to the comp plan. So I just wanted to make sure you all knew about that, we're moving up the council meeting from, to 10:00 AM to noon within a break, and then we'll start at 1:00 with the meeting that we're having to talk about this potential ILA, the terms and conditions, and some of the ideas around future mapping and the comp plan. So just in case you're curious, that's going to be going on, it will be, we will be posting it live on the meeting site as we do typically with YouTube and Facebook, but I just thought people might be interested in that.
And that'll be in this, in these spaces or somewhere special, or where?
It'll actually be here in this council, we are hosting, so it'll be here in council chambers, it'll just be a very tight space because we're going to put all of our council and the county commissioners all down on the floor, so just to be aware of that.
And it's open to the public?
It is open to the public, and we will even open up the overflow room next door.
Very good, thank you very much. All right.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second the motion.
All right, moved by Frye, seconded by Ward, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.